Welcome to the night's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order with roll call.
Mayor Bruin?
Here.
Mr. Blades?
Present.
Mr. Rajaratnam?
Present.
Mr. Hayman?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Here.
Five eyes, we have a quorum.
Okay, first item on our agenda is approval of our agenda for this evening. Has all of our council had a chance to review and are there any amendments to the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. Use the device.
Yes, sir, let's try, oh, try and vote, did I make slides? I did, vote please.
I forgot how to use it. Where is it?
Little number, you're good Solomon, you're up there.
Yeah, they just haven't switched it to our screens.
Oh. Yes, sir.
Waiting for you Skip, and success.
All right, five eyes, motion carries.
Yep. Five eyes, motion carried, okay. Next, if I can ask everyone to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Scott, if you'd lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Rajaratnam, if you'd like to lead us on the implication.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day, thank you for this town of Ridgecrest where we live and cherish, Lord. Lord, I pray for the leadership at national level and state level. Lord, give them your wisdom so that they take this country in the right direction, Lord. I pray for our troops who are in harm's way, protect them from all evil. Lord, I pray for Israel, I pray for peace in that Middle Eastern area, Lord. Lord, I especially pray for the hostages, we ask you for their safe and unharmed release, oh, Lord. Lord, I pray for all the leaders who needs to take right decisions in this aspect, Lord. Lord, as we declare this, proclaim this month as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Lord, I pray for the victims of these domestic violence, Lord, give them your care, give them your nurture, give them your comfort. Lord, I pray for these violent people, change their hearts so that they can have loving hearts. Lord, I pray for, and thank you for organizations like Women's Center who take care of these victims, Lord, give them your wisdom. Lord, as we discuss many issues during this meeting, Lord, may we always put the interests of this city above all things, Lord. Lord, be with each one of us here, Lord, in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Okay, if I could ask the council to join me at the podium, we have one proclamation to present.
Mayor, I don't see anybody here.
I don't see anybody here for the organization.
Are they in the lobby? I thought I saw three women, yeah.
Well, we're gonna encourage them to get here by the time we walk down.
Okay, thank you, sir. You guys went too fast, it's 6:04 and they're like, where are we, got time? Martin, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, we can hear you now, sir, thank you.
There's our shelter team coming in, thank you guys for being here. So this evening I have the honor of presenting a proclamation of the City of Ridgecrest, California proclaiming October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Ridgecrest. And I'd like to go ahead and take a moment and read this for the record. Somebody wants to come and join me or want to be way closer, we're gonna call you up in a second, I promise you that much. So whereas domestic violence is an intolerable violent crime and public health implications for every person in Ridgecrest and East Kern County, and whereas the Women's Center High Desert has led the way since 1978 in addressing family violence by providing 24-hour hotline services, responding to emergency calls, offering comfort and support, empowering those impacted by domestic violence to chart their own course for healing, and by providing a safe nurturing environment to recover and regain their self-esteem and dignity, and whereas the Women's Center High Desert, Inc. has been, has set an important example forging the collaborative relationship between service agencies and organizations to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by domestic violence, thus setting an important example of how the rest of our community might work together to speak out and find solutions to end domestic violence, and whereas through hard work and sacrifice of member staff volunteers and associated businesses and organizations of the Women's Center High Desert, a women's shelter network safe house has been constructed. And whereas the purpose of this proclamation is to educate the people about the many reasons people experience domestic violence, recognize the contribution of domestic violence prevention service providers, and increase the public's understanding of the ways they can be a part of the solution to domestic violence through personal involvement and referral of individuals to domestic violence services. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Ridgecrest does hereby proclaim October 1st to October 31st as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that the City Council of Ridgecrest encourages all citizens and residents to educate themselves about the myriad of causes of domestic violence, of domestic violence, and support local efforts to address domestic violence, proclaim this 18th day of October 2023 by myself and my fellow council members, Mr. Blades, Mr. Rajaratnam, Mr. Hayman, and Mr. Gorman. If I could ask Carol to come up with her team from the Women's Shelter High Desert? Once again, thank you for everything you do for, to help support our community and to help prevent domestic violence, and I'd like to welcome you to take a moment and share some stories if you'd like.
Okay, I will.
And then we take pictures.
Oh, okay. I, I just wanna announce one thing, we worked really hard on a grant and we just, we found out last year we were funded, so we are now going to build on our property a kennel, dog kennel, six, gonna have six runs, so that when people who want to come into our shelter and they have animals, they can come into our shelter. We've had situations where we've had people that had pets and wouldn't come into the shelter because they didn't want to leave their dogs behind, and we tell them that we have a deal with Mary at the shelter, that their dogs can go there and then, but they're afraid their dogs will get adopted and their dogs are their comfort, comfort and companions. So we're very excited that we have been fully funded and we're working with Daryl Grace and we have plans, and it's gonna be a prefabbed dog kennels. It's coming from Pennsylvania, it's from a group of Amish builders, so it'll be all prefabbed and then it will be brought to our site and then we'll have to do the cement and all that, but it was a lot cheaper to do it that way than build it from the ground up because all the Davis Bacon wages and all that stuff, so, and we're really excited and it's gonna pay for us to spay, get the dogs spayed and neutered, vets, it's gonna get them licensed, it's gonna get them the chipped, and what else is it gonna do? Oh, and then if they have, if they have a sickness or anything, the veterinary, the veterinarian people in this community have signed on and said they would help, oh, and kennel attendants that will be able to take care of the dogs. We had a lady who came in a couple months ago and she had two black eyes and a broken nose, and she said, she had her dog with her and she said, I wanna come in your shelter, but I have to work tomorrow between nine and five. Well, we didn't, we don't have anyone to watch the dog between nine and five, so we asked her if she would take it to the shelter and she said no. And then she came back a couple weeks later and had some other issues, and I think she decided then that she would come in and go ahead and put the dog at the, at the animal shelter here. So this is gonna help when people have to make that decision whether leaving their pets behind or getting safe shelter, so we're really excited about that project, so I just wanna share that with you guys. Thank you, and thank you toward the Ridgecrest community, the City Council, the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, everyone who helps provide services with us. We couldn't do this job without all the community partners that we have, and we have a special event, what day is that, Cindy?
26.
The 26th is our Shine the Light where we walk and with flashlights and we have poster or signs, and one year, the new motel over there, these, Ming came running, they said, what are you protesting? We said, nothing, we're trying to not, you know, fight domestic violence, okay, we'll walk with you, and okay, so it's, it's kind of our big thing where we just kinda go up to McDonald's and come back and people honk their horns, and if you guys wanna join us, we would love to have you, it's, even if you don't wanna walk, you can just stick around by the fountain and hold up a sign that says, Fight Domestic Violence, or, so, okay, any questions, anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, you have to go to the photo platform.
Snickers would love hurting the people up here.
That's it, one proclamation.
Amish.
Amish.
Oh, really?
Amish, Amish.
We'll have a, a group of horse and buckies lead it into the city.
That'd be an even longer trail than today's was. They drove slow today.
Okay, so once again, our thanks to the Women's Shelter High Desert for all the services they provide to our community, and once again, I encourage everyone to take a light and shine it on domestic violence. Anything we can do to reduce that in our community only makes us a better community. 26th. 26, 6:00 PM here at, at the shelter, by the fountain, they will start from the fountain. Anybody's welcome to join us for that walk, okay. Next item on our agenda is our public comment, public comment of items not on the agenda, any members, any persons wishing to address the council matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda, may do so at this time, council will not respond to any public comments but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council must, may not act on any item that does not appear on the agenda, speakers are limited to five minutes, and the public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker's asked provide his or her name, and we'll begin with public comment from the floor. How you doing, Danny?
Good, good evening, my name is Manuel Fierro, my address is 920 West Purdue, I am with Ms. Kaylee Moore, who's right behind me here. We are with High Desert Leaping Lizards, High Desert Leaping Lizards is a nonprofit organization which we are contracted by Sierra Sands School District to provide free after school care to six elementary schools and both middle schools servicing 660 students. Students in our program spend the first 30 minutes of the, of the after school during our physical fitness curriculum. Unlike physical fitness of my day where we used to have to do 30 minutes of calisthenics and running around the track for 30 minutes, our students spend the time playing fun games while their hearts are racing, but yet they don't even know that they're exercising. After they are served a snack, our students spend about 30 to 45 minutes each day learning about STEAM. Students in the past have learned about electricity, rockets, bridges and towers, just to name a few, and all these activities are hands-on activities. This month, they are learning the basic physics, learning Newton's laws of motion, friction and force, all while they're building miniature golf courses out of recycled materials. After STEAM, our staff helps the students with homework, and at the end of the day, we come together to learn about music, computers and art during our enrichment time while we wait for the parents to pick up the children. Nationwide, during the last week of October, after school programs across the country participate in an open house called Lights On After School. Lights On After School offers us the chance to advocate for our program while we showcase to our program, to the community and to, to the leaders, to the, and to, to the state representatives. Across the United, across the United States, an invitation to join Lights On After School is offered to mayors, councilmen and women and state representatives. The day is such a big event, many national landmarks, including the Empire State Building, lights up for the program. So which is why I'm here today, our Lights On After School event will be held on October 25th from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock at Richmond, Los Flores, Fowler and Gateway Schools. I'm here to invite you, Mr. Mayor, and all of the City Council men and all the representatives to join us, and just to come and speak with the students, ask them what they have learned, and to play on their self-created miniature golf course. I'm sure you will be impressed. Again, thank you for your time, and again, the date is October 25th from 4 to 6 at Fowler, Gateway, Los Flores and Richmond Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. I'm going to be sure to share it, I will tell you in advance, I apologize, I'm going to be out of town on that day, but hopefully another member of our council may be able to attend or, but I'll make sure to also share and encourage people to come out and participate in the program, thank you, sir. Okay, is there any other public comment from the floor? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the phones? I'll give it just a moment to see if anybody'd like to call in. Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment section. Next on our agenda is our council announcements and direction, I'll go ahead and begin with Mr. Gorman, any public announcements? Any council announcements?
I do, I understand from my physics books that time was invented to keep everything from happening at once, and we fail in that regard, especially on a brilliant weekend in the middle of October, like the one coming up. I, I sense that everything is happening and, and so much is going on that you really should lock yourselves out of the house, bring some money with you, and don't come back until you're stuffed, hungry and broke, attending all the venues that'll be happening on this glorious weekend, that's all I had, sir.
Doc?
So I just have something I wanna bring to the, the attention of the council and particularly the parks and Quality of Life Committee, and just informational.
Okay.
And so I read an article today discussing astral turf and synth, you know, synthetic turf lawns and, which I thought, well, this may pertain to the ball fields, but basically it has to do with the chemical composition of the turf, and so apparently it contains PFAs, which you hear a lot of, they're the forever chemicals, the plastics that get into our system into water and, and it can affect, you know, people's health from various sources, but one is, you know, that I'm talking about is with the, the turfs, and so what they're saying is that the, the, oh, what do they call it, the, we'll just call it the base, but the, it's like the rubber base that the grass, you know, is adhered to, contains these peralkaloids and polyalkyls and bisphenol, which is another one of the chemicals, and so one of the things they talked about was that the heat, they're kinda heat sensitive, and so the hotter it gets, the more these chemicals are released out of the product, and so I was thinking that in regards to the turf here and the fact that it's so hot that we may wanna look into that aspect of the turf before committing to any, anything like that. I don't know, I haven't done enough research yet, cause I just was reading about this report today, but as far as if any manufacturers are producing any of these turfs without these chemicals, but when you read through some of the effects it can have on people, it's everything from neurological deficits to affecting youth and hormones and causing, well, I don't wanna be misquoted here, but anyway, so there's some pretty, pretty substantial health issues that can be brought on by the PFAs, anyway, so just food for thought and that's it.
Solomon?
Obviously, the fair this weekend, I know you'll be talking about that, definitely, so I want to thank Mr. Holloway for his hard work in putting this event together, and also want to thank Mr. Mike Cash regarding the tunnels to towers, it's, this is the first time it is coming here, so want to thank everybody, especially Chief who has escorted probably from, the truck has already come today, right? Yeah, yeah, so, so I want to thank everybody who have been, who have participated in this, bringing in the tunnels to towers into the town for the fairground event, so again, thanks to Mr. Holloway and Mr. Cash for doing this. That's all, sir.
Okay, Kyle?
Since we're calling out events, I think you guys caught most of them, the Navy Ball's on Friday, that's coming up Friday.
Yeah, that's coming Friday night, right?
Yep, that's coming Friday night, you can buy tickets at the door, I'm told.
Okay, I'll save to cover events and stuff like that at the end of the council comments, just make sure that, but thanks for covering all those, they're all good topics, we've got several others coming too.
Something I wanted to add too, I just remembered in that article was, it's not a new subject, Governor Brown passed legislation back when he was governor, pretty much banning cities from taking action on it, but then here just recently, and that's what brought my attention, was Governor Newsom just signed a bill bringing it back to, he vetoed a bill, I think that would require, you know, the substances not being in it, but he did pass a bill giving cities back the ability, kinda superseded Governor Brown's bill to make decisions on, on the matter, so.
Next on our agenda is our consent calendar, all items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Council, consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to have, wishes to comment or ask questions. If common discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar, and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I'll read our three consent items, the first item is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated September 6, 2023. Next item is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated October 4, 2023. And the next one is a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council confirming the continuation of a local emergency related to the August 20th Tropical Storm Hillary. Do any members of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second.
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries, good job, Bradley.
That was faster.
Fix, I like it.
We're gonna give you a thumbs up on that one, Riles, it, it worked fast. Okay, next item is we have one item for discussion this evening, the, our regularly scheduled discussion regarding the board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority, Mr. Hayman.
Thank you, Mayor, the groundwater authority did meet on Wednesday, October 11th, and I will go over some of the highlights of that meeting, so starting with the item number, agenda item nine was the board review and approval of the 2024 budget, and so that was approved by unanimous decision by the board. I think one item I'd like to just briefly discuss about that was the revenues were down a little bit, it was brought up to everybody's attention, but, and looking at it was decided that our Water Resource Manager, Steve Johnson and other staff that are in contact with other water masters and pump, large, large scale pumpers in the state, have stated that they've experienced historic low pumping levels this past year due to, we had an extremely cooler April, May, June, July was a little bit hot and then September or August rolled around and it was pretty mild August, and then we were followed up with some record, record rain in the valley or in the, in the state, so, so they, we'll keep an eye on that, but felt it's probably a, a short-term issue, so moving on to item number 10 was approval of the USBR Title 16 feasibility study with the water recycling plant, so Capitol Corr gave a nice thorough presentation on the recycled water plant, so it was determined by the board not to move forward with that. The costs that would be incurred are pretty great, it's about $140 million project, we would have to come up with 3.8 million or so dollars to, you know, through the GA to start the, the process, and then come up with over, it was a 25% match and then I think it was 80%, so we'd have to come up with another 80 million to cover the infrastructure costs of it, plus another three plus million for O and M costs for maintenance of it each year, and so water cost would come out to, without factoring the O and M costs, and there was about 60, you know, 6,000 and upper 6,000, so close to $7,000 an acre foot, but if you factored the 3 million O and M cost into it, you're looking at another couple million or a couple thousand dollars on top of that cost, so 9,000, so, which the plan involved treating water to a certain level and then direct injection into the ground, so deemed cost prohibitive and shelved, so no further actions to be taken on that. Following, next is item number 11, agenda item 11, transient pool allotment transfer form with Amberglow Ranch, and no action was required on, on this, but basically it was a, dealt with a small farmer that had sold their property and inquiring as to the 224 acre field of water that has been allotted to that, that person, and so is it transferable? And so the staff is moving forward with that, which is deemed it was and is.
Within the transit pool, right?
In the transit pool, yes, so initially those who had signed into the transit pool were allotted certain amounts of water in the, in the transit pool. And so next, agenda item 12 was approval of payment to Union Pacific Railroad for trenchless crossings, that was pretty straightforward, there was a fee of $755 for approval, or for their, their process of going through the trenchless crossings on the railroad property, so that was pretty straightforward, that was approved, and agenda item 13, five-year groundwater sustainability plan update, so basically the GA, we will need to have a five-year plan update, and so that process has started, and so there's a timetable, I was gonna read it out, but it basically starts first of the year, runs through 24, and by the Decemberish of 24, they'll have the plan completed and then ready for submit, submitting to DWR, I believe in January. So next year that will be, there was a, if you, everybody remembers, there was some correct, corrective actions that need, that the state had recommended that we look into, and so there'll be follow-up on that, plus there's a requirement of a five-year update to look at our process and how things are going and, and submit to the, to DWR, so that will be in process, and aside from that, we had the Water Resource Managers' report, nothing overly important on that, the General Managers' report and PAC report, so the other highlight was that the governor, last time I'd reported about AB 779 having passed through the senate and was sitting on the governor's desk, the governor did sign it, that's good news for the groundwater authority, basically the, I'll give some highlights of 779, AB 779 protects small farmers and disadvantaged pumpers within the basin or basins, and also clarifies the role of Sigma, this Sustainable Groundwater Management Act during the adjudication proceedings, and so adjudication proceedings, as everybody knows, there's been an adjudication filed in the, in this basin, and so the adjudication proceedings determine the allocation of pumping rights between individuals for a. pumping rights uh between individuals for a particular basin. It does not, and now we're talking about adjudication proceedings here, they do not and cannot supersede or provide a mechanism to bypass Sustainable Groundwater Management Act requirements through the courts. Unfortunately, current litigants, uh current litigants and adjudications uh through the state seek to use adjudication processes to overturn GSPs. Many parties um in Sigma-related adjudications, including those within the Indian Wells Valley groundwater basin, have sought to use the adjudication process to then basically deny, delay, and obfuscate, or you know, prevent the ability of um the GSPs um to um perform their actions, so. In regards to the disadvantaged um pumpers and small farmers, the uh through the adjudication process, large pumpers often seek to deny due process to small and disadvantaged groundwater users who are financially unable to participate in adjudication process. So parties in the Indian Wells Valley proceeding have already asserted that they will seek litigation defaults on over 90% of the well owners of the basin. AB 779 will allow the state to provide evidence to the court on the adjudication's impact on small farming and disadvantaged persons. So a lot of that pertains to private wells in the valley, so um pumpers that are classified as de minimis, uh private well owners out in the basin, they're pumping less than two acre feet of water, um have not been, they they're kind of being left out in the, in the scope of the proceedings. So AB 779 um will protect these disadvantaged pumpers and and um and small farmers. Another highlight, um, no, I think that pretty much covers it. In a nutshell, AB 779 seeks to make the groundwater adjudication process more accessible, efficient, and transparent for all water users, especially small farmers and other historically marginalized groundwater users, to ensure that the process produces an, you know, inequitable outcome. So that's, I know we hadn't really talked about some of the finer points of AB 779, but we're glad to see it passed and uh and have an aspect of, aspect of it behind us, so. And that's all I have. So any questions or comments?
No, I was tracking. I was glad to see it get across the governor's desk. There was a few that maybe wish hadn't across his desk, but that one was, I thought, at least a win for the groundwater authority. I appreciate Capital Core's work.
Their work was pretty phenomenal, actually. When you looked at the proponents, or let's say the opposition that um list to to that bill, when we went to Sacramento, uh the uh our supervisor, Phil Peters, was uh was on that bill, 779, I was on 560. The list of opponents to that bill was over a page. The list of proponents was two. The Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority and, I believe, Santa Barbara Water Municipality. So for us to, you know, went out in that, or I look at it as an us, I mean, we were proponents of it. Was a, was a huge step, and Capital Core was, well, extremely prominent, you know, force behind us.
Yeah, yeah, they were key to the uh getting, getting it across, and I appreciate that.
Yep, that work.
Yeah. And the report they did for, like, it was not, I mean, even though you guys shelved it, uh I thought it was good that they did all that work, you know?
On 560?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one, if I believe Ron, isn't that, I mean, it, yeah, so it's not, it's not out of the, and it, yeah, and it kind of has some correlation then with 779.
You know, there was, there was one thing, Scott, that I I missed. I I had gotten interrupted while I was watching the meeting, so it glossed over, and I thought the uh the Navy representative mentioned something to the effect of, it was something about the geothermal plant. And it got, I I I got interrupted and I couldn't hear anymore.
Oh, well, it had to do, and I wasn't quite completely clear on it, but it had to do with the geothermal um revenues that are are for projects, um as to whether it was utilized already or not, and so the commander and um April were going to um get together and so probably report back out on on where we stand on that, but.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Um sometimes in my shop, when I'm not making too much noise, I'll put the last um groundwater authority meeting on YouTube, uh on my tailgate amplifier and try to listen to it. You don't know who's talking, but you know what's being said. It gave me an idea. I carried it in and chatted with uh our city manager a bit with it. And and I'll share that idea now, perhaps uh if you find there's merit. It's something you could carry into the groundwater, and it's this. I sense, from what I hear, um the groundwater authority would appreciate it if the de minimis, the small and disadvantaged de minimis well owners uh were more forthright in carrying over and reporting difficulties they're having with uh their wells. I listened to PAC, um and a well owner tends to pay any attention at all to his well when a darn thing breaks and the water quits coming out, then you go out there, scratch your head, start making calls, fussing with it. Until it breaks, you don't do nothing. You tend to ignore it, and um at least I do on my well. My idea was this, to help facilitate getting the de minimis owners more engaged with uh this whole groundwater authority uh enterprise is for the groundwater authority, perhaps operationally through the water district, offering this deal, and that is um selecting a subset of the tests you do on water to get a gauge of the water quality, whether or not the quality of your water, not particularly the level, but the quality of your water is degrading or trending one way or another. Up until recently, I sensed that um someone's well is affected when the water level drops below your pump, so it's pumping air and you're obviously affected, but um what hasn't been discussed enough to satisfy me is, has the quality of the water started to degrade? That may be a coalmine canary that something else is about to go wrong. I don't know. I'm just listening. And so um my idea was this, offer for free to the de minimis uh well owners uh to, if they'll submit a, a little bottle of their well water to the water district, who has a brick and mortar presence, a counter, a place they can walk up to. Groundwater does, doesn't have that yet, but this is a place they can go, and someone will smile and accept their water and make sure that it's associated with the proper address. And at that time, uh they could um get the small sequence of tests run. Perhaps they'll get a volume discount running in batch mode. I don't, I'm sure they wouldn't just mix all the water together. No, they wouldn't. But the reciprocal, the reciprocation on that, we'll do it for free and we'll share the data with you. We'll utilize the data as we can and must to get a a clearer view of the water in the valley. You register that well, please. That would be the reciprocation to the small well owners, who, many of which, I'm not guessing here, have been reluctant to register their well, a little bit like registering a gun. Whatever. That would be the reciprocation. Um most well owners, uh if they were getting one of these, I think fairly expensive well and well water analyses done for free, they'd be willing to register their well and um engage, at least in this regard, a little more fully into the overall enterprise. I I sense that the groundwater authority uh people have been um in somewhat despair at getting these people to come forward, please. They have to do that. You can't just go out there, throw a rope over them and drag them outside. Okay, that's my, that's my idea. Did I tell it uh just now as I shared it with you, Ron?
Yes.
I'd never play poker with that guy. Okay, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Uh I will say the, one of the uh. Hello? Uh no, uh one of the things that the groundwater.
Yes, you have a caller?
Is it reverberating?
I don't know what that means.
Martin's screen.
Oh, Martin needs.
It's uh Martin's microphone.
Martin, you.
I'm on Newton.
So one of the things that the groundwater authority and and Sigma's require, requirements is not just the chronic lowering of the groundwater, but also the water quality. And so they do monitor, you know, through some of the well mo- current well monitoring um wells that they have, do monitor that. There is a well that was just brought up that uh it wasn't droppage of the, of the water level that this person had problems with, it was the uh quality of the water. It had become so full of uh TDS or total dissolved solids, um that um it was, it's it's non-podable. But um I see your point on trying to get a, and now, or were you referring to the water district putting that bill?
Well, the water district's involvement would be their availability as being a brick and mortar place where people could walk in, get a smile, and submit their water, and perhaps submit their paperwork to register their well. The uh groundwater uh involvement would be to pay to get the uh well water. They have money. You know that. Pay to get the well water tested. The selection of the subset of tests done to the well water would be up to a pro. I don't know any. There's one at the water district.
No, I'll I'll look into that, but uh I'm faintly remembering that I think part of the requirements of a well is to have your water tested, you know, through the county. So I think some of that information.
When it's first dug.
Was just when it's first dug? Yeah, I remember something along that line that they're yeah, yeah. But anyway, to uh, you know, bring that data to the forefront, I think is, you know, if we can find ways to do it, I think it's good, so anyway.
I appreciate your positive response. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Are there any public comment, uh the public comments? Seeing them from the four floor, I'll give it a moment. Seen none, we'll bring back. Thank you, sir. Did you have any other final comment? Nope. Thank you, sir. Next item is our committee reports. We have two committee reports for this period. Uh first is our city org committee, which met on the 5th of October. Mr. Gorman, do you have anything you'd like to add from that meeting? I have, I have notes if you want, you want to take it or go? One of our two committee meetings didn't have a quorum. Was was this it, or was it the, the um Quality of Life Committee?
Uh it was uh Quality of Life that did not have a quorum.
Yeah.
And city org did.
Did?
Yes.
No, I have nothing to offer on that committee unless you have something.
Yeah, I can, I give some.
Please do.
So uh city org committee met. Um we're continuing to work with the grant programs out of CalRecycle uh on our continuing education for the community in regards to trash sorting. We're definitely shifting our direction in terms of education from um, you know, understanding your schedule to understanding the most effective ways to sort and what services are still out there and available to help people mitigate their concerns over the weekly versus biweekly trash service. This includes the option to obviously uh get additional recycling or organics barrels at a, at no additional cost, uh as well as if you have price concerns, the ability to reduce your uh weekly, uh biweekly trash size, if you should be interested in it. And as well as we're going to continue to put focus on the sorting. So we're kind of moving into the second phase of the education, which is now educating as much as we can to continue to improve the diversion air, diversion numbers, uh which have been remarkable already in terms of what we've already achieved, but really continuing that directional focus on uh sorting. We have some grant money uh from the state uh to continue to invest in that, and we're looking at uh several different options focused on the sorting side. We also uh extended the grant program to the um Eco Hero program that will be coming to our schools again. We expect that'll probably be happening um in the spring of 24. Megan was still working on dates. It might be the fall, it might be the very end of the, the fall school semester or the very beginning of the uh spring school semester. Uh it won't be in April during Earth Day because they've said that is already a zoo. The other thing we talked about was the community banner program, which some of you guys may or may not be aware of. Once again, let me provide a thanks to Megan McKenzie for uh taking the initiative and and seeing where something would run to. Our community showcase banner program sold out. Um we will begin placing the banners here, hopefully within the next, you know, 60 to 90 days. Uh the banner program runs uh from Balsam Street south to Ridgecrest Boulevard and then uh east on, uh west on Ridgecrest Boulevard to uh Norma. Um it will again highlight uh local businesses that have agreed to be sponsors in the showcase, as well as highlighting the 60th anniversary of our community, which is coming up uh next month. So they'll be out there for the next year, um celebrating our community, and it also really kind of begins the process of us building out uh more and more uh ways to show, to highlight our community. And we've made an effort already with Balsam this, this year in our night off Balsams and night on Balsams, and we're looking forward to seeing how this will coordinate into something even better for us uh in 2024. So thank you, Megan, for your efforts in that program, and I think the community will be very excited to see that in the coming weeks. I want to throw out something also that was said during that meeting uh for the Public Works Director, Mr. Reed, who may not, may or may not have heard it, but we wanted to offer a compliment to the um idea of putting out those road signs. There's no greater way to get our community involved in something fun and interesting and to get rid of some stuff that needed to get rid of. And so a compliment and a thanks to the planning department for getting that out there. It wasn't really city org, but it really, those are the types of fun things that really engage people, and the number of people that have came looking for either their kids' names or the streets that they lived on when they were 12 or something else has been very cool, and I want to thank the city staff that worked according to that, and also just the idea. It was a fun idea. Uh that was all for city org. Unless there's anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Gorman?
No, that's it.
Any questions from council and city org? Yeah, well, and and letting our citizens know what's going on, and and when they're engaged, we're engaged, and that makes it a better, uh fun, better community, and we're going to talk about lots of that fun stuff and at the end. And you have some space now of a sudden. Next is Finance Committee. Uh Finance Committee met on the 10th. Doc, you want to take Finance?
Sure. So we did, did meet, and um the discussion items were revenue update and uh ARPA update. And so the uh sales tax, Measure P, Measure V, um TOT, and uh property taxes are all um doing well. And some areas above uh points based on the same time last year, so we're sitting good on that area. Um in the ARPA, um we discussed pending projects, the IT switches, um we're waiting a quote on those, and then um change orders to the tennis courts and uh and any um remaining funding um being uh some, or well, relegated over to the tennis court. So I believe that pretty much highlighted.
Yeah, that's what I had is.
Okay.
Yeah, as I had, uh, ARPA, just for the, the sake of the rest of the council, um ARPA cost expectations for the tennis court are absolutely running over. And based on the amount of work that's going to be done, we believe that there'll be a recommendation coming to the council for a reallocation of the ARPA funds relative to the tennis courts, which will essentially end the ARPA funds. I don't know the exacts, we haven't heard an exact number yet, but but it is looking as if that the last project that we'll get through will be um the tennis courts with the residual ARPA money, if the council should so approve, uh and the switches. Those would be the last two projects to get done.
And the tennis court amounts allocated, allocated to the tennis courts would be after the IT switch?
Yeah.
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 And so that would be coming before council though for approval at a future, uh, meeting date. Um, we both agreed on the recommendation. It just hasn't scheduled to a date because we don't have a final number yet, I don't believe. The other thing we had some kind, some discussions on, um, first that, uh, the measure P committee is starting its process of, uh, getting closer and closer. City clerk has, has asked us each to start preparing our candidates and, and we expect that the measure P committee will be forming probably at the beginning of 2024. Um, and then we also had a long conversation about, um, accrued benefits, uh, as they specifically relate to, uh, sick and vacation liabilities for, uh, city staff and how we need to kind of look at addressing those liabilities in the future for, uh, understanding our realized, uh, our unrealized potential costs, uh, that are on the books and what we need to do in terms of accruals or, uh, adjustments to the accrued, um, benefit amount. Uh, that's going to be a process. It's not going to happen overnight, but we're continuing to have discussions about not just, you know, we don't just sit there and look at revenue and go, oh, revenue's great, that's stop there. We actually typically will have one or two topics that we dive into from a, you know, strategic or, or expense perspective in terms of making sure that we're ready for the next possible problem and how we're going to manage that. So, um, but the only other thing I would say is that we're continuing to, um, prepare for, uh, the pool and the bond work and, and everything else that we expect to bring to the council here. You know, as soon as we get through plans and design and bidding, which probably will be spring of 24, um, we hope to have something, um, out to the community here maybe in November for more of a final draft version to show. Parks and Recreation did not have a quorum, but we did meet and we did have, uh, general discussions. Excuse me, on, uh, a lot of different things, but the most, uh, the biggest one just to highlight is the upcoming events, uh, for the community. So, uh, first, uh, thank you to Chief Scott, our Parks and Recs Department and, and the PD for having a great open house with the police department. Thank you for a great evening that night. I know, uh, it was a lot of fun. There were a lot of kids out here. I believe that we saw the numbers were in the roughly 2,000 range of number of people that were here. And they spent about 80 minutes here, which is great when you think about how, you know, how many different things that they interact with over 80 minutes. It's a lot. Uh, so thank you for that great event. And then we have, uh, a series of events coming up. Uh, the first is our trunk or treat on October 27th. If you've never been to a city of Ridgecrest trunk or treat, um, I will encourage you to, to laughingly go look at some of the Ridgecrest Facebook messages where they, they thought maybe there would be a hundred kids. And we quickly reminded them that there should be two to 3,000 kids. Um, there will be a lot of kids here. It'll be very exciting to also be able to see how many kids come through and how many people are here for those events, uh, with the data that we can now get from Placer. Um, it'll be interesting to see, um, how many people come through. And, uh, they have a great trunk or treat event scheduled for the 27th. And if that wasn't enough, then they have booze off Balsam scheduled for October 28th. Um, and that'll be another great community event, uh, with, uh, I think they have, are they doing a zombie walk or? All I know is they're doing, they're, they're planning a bunch of stuff as always. There's going to be nothing short of, you're not going to be bored. It's, it's a great night to come out. And that'll be a lot of fun as well. I believe there's a, um, I believe the same night, um, is the Alta One, um, walkthrough house as well, just as a heads up for the community if they're interested. But, but booze off Balsam should be a great evening and we hope to see everyone there. I think that was it for quality of life. If there's anything else you wanted to add?
No, thank you, but see what you missed? Sheesh, these, uh, committee meetings are delightful. They're informational and they're a little less formal than the meetings you're looking at right now. I'd tell you exactly when they're happening, but you can look that up. Become engaged. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions for either of those committees? Nope? Okay, other committees, boards or commissions? Anybody?
Current cog tomorrow also have a, um, East Current Air Pollution Board meeting coming up.
Hearing no others? City manager report?
Yes, uh, Clean California is going out to bid, uh, this Friday. As a reminder, that is the new walking path through the park, the bathrooms and snack bar, uh, the refurbishment of the tennis courts with lights, along with a significant amount of, uh, new landscaping that will go along with that. Uh, we're hoping to have, uh, the bids will come back. We're looking at opening up the bids November 16th. So I have a pretty good idea where we set out cost wise and where we set out with, uh, the remaining ARPA funds, uh, then in regards to, you know, how much we need for the switches. We're also looking at keeping, uh, Pearson Park closed for approximately another three to four weeks. Um, staff has done a significant amount of repair work out there due to damage from the flood. Um, right now they've, uh, put additional dirt out there. They've hydro seeded it. And so really what we're doing is we're waiting for that grass to take root and get through a couple of cuttings before we open up the park. But we have gone through and repainted all of the, the benches, uh, replaced the, the wood chips and the, the playground. So here in three to four weeks, that park should be good to go for use of the community again. And I'll ask, um, uh, Mr. Reed to step up and give a, a short announcement on Clean California Two, as well as an update on, uh, Ward and the sewer line project.
So as you guys know, we, uh, we're debating on whether or not we were going to apply for Clean California Two. Uh, the transit staff came to me and said that the representative from Caltrans said they hadn't gotten many rural applications for rural things. And we do have a few rural areas like, uh, the Inyo Current Transit Hub. It's got no landscaping, cold mixed drives, things like that. Happy to announce the application that the transit staff submitted was accepted and we won the grant for $187,000 to landscape the whole Inyo Current Transit Hub, add some curbs and do some minor asphalt repair out there. Um, as you guys all know, Carmageddon is upon us. We've been working closely with, um, the car wash and some of the business over there to make sure we could accommodate their, uh, Halloween festivities and things like that. Uh, we finished the last man hole in California on Monday. Their asphalt replacement is working from Richmond back towards them. And the last I saw yesterday, they were about to Broadway, um, at replacing all the asphalt and getting rid of all the cold mix. We expect to be in this reach, which is what we're calling phase one of four phases for about two weeks. So there'll be another lull in about two weeks while we flop traffic control, get all the necessary things set up. And then we will work in the intersection of Cal of Ridgecrest and China Lake Boulevard and then onto the fun area where we're going to have to de- deal with the Burger King drive through and things like that. And then the last phase is from French to Argus. So, uh, in driving it today, it seemed like it, the traffic control setup is working. After many renditions and making sure we got it right, so we didn't impact businesses too heavily, um, I think it's, it's going pretty smoothly. So if anybody has any questions about anything, let me know. Ward Two started, um, we're just about done with the first undercrossing of five. As we all know, we have contingency on projects for a reason. And as soon as we put a bucket in the ground, we found out that, um, from the previous install, they had slurried 90% of the ditch line where the pipe is. So we had to chip all that slurry out around utilities, things like that, so we could get boxes out and get the pipe out. Um, we did not expect to find filter fabric. Uh, when they did that work, they must've had about a 15 foot wide ditch when they did it originally and they put a 15 foot wide piece of fabric down. So every time we pulled on the fabric, it caved part of the road in. So that is why you've seen Ward Street has been closed. Um, I would expect the first one to be completely wrapped up and back to being, uh, somewhat drivable, um, by the end of this week. And then Griffith will move down the street to Sierra View and begin on, uh, the next two crossings. Uh, Ward's a 45 day working contract. We're pushing and working some longer days, trying to make sure we keep temperatures so that way we can put down our asphalt and still have, uh, viable temperatures for that.
A question. Travis, you look like you could use some sleep. This is, so I'm asked by perhaps the same people who might ask, is Garlock open? This is the Carmageddon we've been asked to expect, right? We're right in the middle of it, right? Does it get any worse?
We're right at the beginning of it.
We're still at the beginning of it.
It's going to get worse.
It could get worse.
It's going to get worse.
So there, it could get worse.
It's going to get worse. Not, I, I wouldn't sugarcoat it.
We are in the least impactful area right now because we are on the city side of, uh, 178. When we get into 178, uh, China Lake Boulevard and Ridgecrest Boulevard by a landslide is the busiest intersection in town. So when we have that shut down and are detouring people down Balsam, you can expect to have a significant increase in traffic, uh, on our local roads.
Be patient and be crafty how you get around town. That would be my advice.
Yeah, we've had a couple of people ask about, um, how come we're not working at night? How come we're not doing things like that? Although working at night, I feel is, uh, it would be a great solution if we were not 22 feet deep. We have very sandy soils, we're 22 feet deep. It's already, um, treacherous work for the guys that are in the hole. And the last thing I want to do is put them in harm's way more because you, when it's dark, you have lights and you have shadows. It's very hard to see before the ground caves in, ground will talk to you. Granted, we have it shored, we have all the stuff to meet all the OSHA regulations out there, but, um, things can happen relative, relatively quickly when you're on a job and you're doing things that deep. So we felt it was in the best risk, interest to protect life and inconvenience our residents as bad as that sounds, it's the last thing I want to do. It, I feel like that's the right decision to make when, with a project like this. Thank you.
That's all I, that's all I have. Okay. Thank you, sir. Next would be future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items requested? Hearing none? Mayor and council comments? We'll reverse direction. I'll let Kyle be first off.
No comments.
Solomon? Doc? I have none. None? So I get to go, I get to run the whole show?
I use them up before this.
Okay, so just a couple big reminders. It is our exciting weekend here in Ridgecrest. There is a lot going on, uh, beginning tomorrow and through this weekend. Just a few highlights to make sure that everyone knows how many exciting things there are. For everyone out there who says, there's nothing to do in Ridgecrest, this is the weekend that I'd want you to all go, well, maybe there are a few things. First, Desert Empire Fair, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, last year, we believe we had nearly 15,000 participants at the fair. I want to encourage everyone to come out. Um, Mr. Holloway and his team at the fairgrounds are excited and ready for you. And I think they will have another great, uh, event for you, especially with the inclusion of the Tunnels to Tower exhibit. Uh, this is a unique, once in a community opportunity. Um, I encourage you to go out there and see it. Don't miss this opportunity to see it. Now, if you're busy, however, and we understand Friday night and you're at the Navy Ball, we'd love to see you there on Saturday or Sunday because Saturday night is our rodeo. We have rodeo coming back to our community for Saturday night. And then Sunday is of course the return of our demolition derby. Two fantastic fun events. Bring your family out, be part of our fair. Remember that these type of events are supported by our community. And if you guys don't come out, it makes it harder for us to continue to grow and improve these events in the future. Uh, I want to thank the Navy, uh, for the invitation to the Navy Ball and I hope they have a wonderful evening. I don't believe I will be able to make it based on, um, some travel times back and forth, but, um, I hope it'll be a great evening and I really do, again, thank them for the invitation and for the involvement. I did not, at the last meeting, uh, take a moment to thank Senator Shannon Grove. SB 14, which is her human trafficking bill, was passed and signed into law. I wanted to thank her for her efforts to continue to protect the children of, of not just our community, but communities across the state by making human sex trafficking and just human trafficking a, uh, strikeable offense and something that should be an appropriate level of, uh, punishment. The state has continued down this crazy path of not punishing people for their actions. And I was, uh, just want to thank her again for standing up for, um, those, those families that have been affected by that. Um, I have four small kids. I could never even possibly imagine what a family goes through in a situation like that. Okay, I clicked that one. I want to thank, uh, 760 Fitness. Uh, if you really are looking for something additionally to do on Saturday morning, uh, 760 Fitness has committed to and is working very hard to bring back the Relay for Life event. They will be running a Relay for Life event this Saturday at their, uh, their facility. Uh, they'll have people walking laps there and, and again, celebrating. Uh, Relay for Life is struggling in our local community. It's looking for a champion. I just want to thank the temples for, for standing up and trying to champion and to keep that event alive for us. And I think that is all I have to say, other than, uh, I just want to again thank our city staff and our team for again, putting together such a, a wide, uh, array of events for our community. All too often we, we hear, there's nothing to do in Ridgecrest, there's nothing to do in Ridgecrest. Uh, if you have something-
Oh, wait, I'll, I'll, when you're done.
Yeah, and the proof is, the proof is in the pudding, guys. Um, the idea of us being able to come together and bring the, uh, Tunnels to Tower exhibit to this community is truly a sign of, of how we're growing up and how we're continuing to bring and trying to bring more and more things to this community. Thank you to our teams putting together, um, booze off Balsam and all these things. The next couple of weekends, fair, booze off Balsam, Petrogla Festival. There's no excuse over the next three weekends to not be in town and to not be enjoying your wonderful community. Well, and trunk or treat, I said, I already, I said that earlier, but I said trunk or treat and booze off Balsam. I'm trying to get to the adults that say, there's nothing to do in town, I need to go out of town for stuff. There's a lot of fun stuff to do these, over the next few weekends, so. Doc gets a fun spot.
Yeah, I just want to add, I want to shout out to Lugol's Cafe. Um, over the weekend, my wife and I went there for dinner, I think, we go Saturday night. And, uh, so while we were sitting there, they started setting up a stage and, um, the guy asked us, we're there for the, um, that was setting up the stage, asked if we're there for the, uh, the show. And we were like, what show? And he's like, well, the comedy, we're putting on a comedy show tonight. And so, I mean, they sat a few tickets left, so, um, we thought, well, why not? We were sitting right by the stage and I don't know if that's a good place to be in a comedy show. I don't, unless you're like, pretty, uh, thick skinned. But, uh, it was fantastic. Uh, the, uh, the, the comedy group that would put it on, they've, they've, uh, performed down in Los Angeles, like at the Improv and in Vegas and, uh, they're veterans. And so, um, needless to say, they, um, you know, hammered on each of the various, um, armed services groups pretty, pretty heavily. Nobody was, uh, uh, left out in their comedy, whether it was age, um, race, um, you know, your military background, you name it, uh, they covered it all. And, um, anyway, so, uh, um, Javier Lugo that, uh, owns Lugos, he said that, um, it's the first time doing it. If it's a success, they'll look at doing it again. And, uh, so I think it was a, uh, success. They were, they were pretty full and, uh, we had a good time. So keep your eye open, uh, for events like that, too. I was really happy and it turned out to be quite a fun night, so. Anyway.
Hey Eric, if you mind if I add something?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, this is a quick go back. I apologize, I should've said something. So we've talked about this in past council meetings and everybody, I know it feels like we've passed out a lot of accolades for performance in the past, but I wanted to, I got some feedback just yesterday. Uh, it was, I was standing in a group of guys and, and one of them said, hey, how did your, how did your flood go? That was the exact thing. I said, well, our, our flood, our flood went well, I think. I think it went pretty well. And all of them, that was their way to stop me and give me, give me grief as anywhere you go. That's part of the, part of the deal. They said, well, when this town gets anything, a half inch rain, two inches of rain, sometimes we can't, you know, years passed, we couldn't even get to Denny's, but that didn't happen this time. We can't believe how well things went. And I said, well, let me just stop you. All of the accolades, you know, doesn't go to the council. It goes, it goes right to the city staff. And it touched every single department. And I know that we've said it in the past and, and we had events, but I, I wanted to throw it right back at you guys. Uh, from the brief, from the pre-briefings with the PD there, uh, Cherie keeping everybody straight on how things have to run. Parks and Rec were out there, you know, working sandbags, pumping parks- pumping parks, your roads guys working hard, your your wastewater treatment plant guys, tractors out in the desert. I mean, I can't go on and on enough. I just wanted to let you know that I'm still hearing about it. People are still stopping me and saying, man, this could have gone so much worse, and this is a once in a thousand year event. And it just need, I needed to echo it back to you that, you know, we're still getting positive feedback on all of your performance. So thank you.
Well, with that, I don't believe I have anything else, so I'll simply say it's 7/11, and it's time to go get a Big Up. Have a good evening.